Call the order, the special city commission meeting for Tuesday, May 27, 2014. Amy's not here, so Scott, could you call the roll?
Commissioner Foreman?
Here.
Commissioner Crisian?
Here.
Commissioner Perry?
Here.
Commissioner Scott?
Here.
Mayor Metzger?
Here. Thank you. We have one item on tonight's agenda, and that is consideration of the proposed city manager employment agreement between the city of Pleasant Ridge and Mr. James Brookman. Before we move on, I've asked for Joyce Parker to present to us. Joyce was our consultant through the Michigan Municipal League, and I've asked her if she would just kind of brief the community on the process that was undertaken, just so we all have a similar understanding of all the events that went to place, because I think there is some misunderstanding, there are some questions, and Joyce is nice enough to come back after all this and give us a little presentation.
Thank you. Mayor, should I stand here or any position?
Yes, I think you should. For the cameras and everything, if you want to, you can talk to us.
Okay. Well, good afternoon to everyone. As mentioned by the mayor, my name's Joyce Parker. I'm one of the facilitators through the Michigan Municipal League, and I was responsible for working with the community as part of the search process. And so what I'd like to do is kind of talk about the steps that took place in order to reach a point for the commissioners to make a decision on how to proceed. First of all, the process started in January, and as part of that process, I met with the mayor and members of the commission to develop a profile for the position as well as a community profile. And that timeframe, to get that process completed, was about two weeks. Once the profile was developed, then the next step was to actually advertise the position. The position was advertised with the Michigan Municipal League, the International City-County Management Association. Emails were sent to other communities related to potential candidates for the position, and through that process, we were able to receive a number of resumes. Once receiving the resumes, there was a review process on my part as far as reviewing the resumes in comparison with the requirements established for the position. And once that process was completed, the next step was to actually develop a list of semifinals, those that potentially met all of the requirements and that could be a fairly good fit for the community. That information then was reviewed with the city commission, and based on discussions with the commission, five finalists was considered and invited in for a meet and greet as well as for interviews. And so, once the interviews took place, members of the commission deliberated, they had their own evaluation process, and made a determination in terms of who they would want to consider for that position. Any questions or comments?
Sure. Anything?
I think the only clarification I make is I think we actually selected seven because we included two alternates.
Right.
And we narrowed that down to five in case one of the five primary candidates weren't able to participate.
That's correct.
And the other clarification would be that we went with your suggestions as far as the top five?
That's correct. Part of evaluating the candidates to get everything narrowed to the semifinalists, and then from there to potential finalists, I did provide a recommendation to the commission.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve the employment agreement between the city of Pleasant Ridge and Mr. James Brookman?
Your honor, I move the city managers, sorry, employment agreement between the city of Pleasant Ridge and the city manager candidate, James Brookman, be approved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Now, we'd like to open it up to the audience for comments.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Tom Charkier, 11 Oakland Park. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, commissioners, for the opportunity to be involved in and observe the processes taken to choose a new city manager. After taking the time to speak individually with each of the candidates at the informal meet and greet, investing five hours on Saturday listening to the responses that they had, the questions that this commission had for them, and then observing the workshop where the commission found consensus, I fully understand how our commissioners arrived at the decision to offer this position to city manager, to Jim Brookman. Whether we like it or not, our city is poised at a precipice of change. Consequently, we can and must be ready to work with it. This requires a progressive vision and voice to create an environment that advocates and actualizes what is in the best interest of our community. In this context, status quo is the equivalent of losing ground. Managing contracts, setting agendas, and running the day-to-day operations of this city are not enough. Pleasant Ridge now needs someone with the creative resources to find new ways to address today's issues and advance the city's best interests in the future. During the interview process, it was exciting to hear Mr. Brookman expound on the opportunities of working with the Woodward Avenue Action Association and recognizing all the potential stakeholders with whom Pleasant Ridge needs to partner. He talked about creating destination places and lifestyle centers that are multi-use, work-able spaces with meaning and purpose. His long-term vision that preserves the character of Pleasant Ridge neighborhoods are thoughtful zoning and historically compatible design standards rather than just arbitrary rules. His clear understanding of fiscal issues, including the current budgeting process and the need to establish a more sound financial structure, and last, his sincere desire, I think, to facilitate collaboration between the city administration and the citizens and the business people of Pleasant Ridge. It's true, he has never held the title before. However, we can feel confident that Jim Brookman has the experience needed to do an outstanding job as city manager of Pleasant Ridge. In fact, we are getting more talent, experience, and enthusiasm than we could have hoped for. He is academically prepared. His experiences as planning manager in Rochester Hills and as a consultant working for scores of cities, scores of budgets, and scores of hot-button issues make him uniquely qualified for this job. He is a man of high moral character, and with Jim Brookman, Pleasant Ridge restores to the position of city manager one of its own, which is a point that should not be lost on any of us. Mr. Brookman now has to live every day with the decisions he and his administration make. Now that's motivation. I know that I could be speaking for others when I say, "Mr. Brookman, congratulations."
Thank you.
Thank you. Our Mondo Cabazos, 18 North. Question in regards to the consultant that we used. I think Ms. Parker mentioned that she was given all the requirements, is that correct, of what the job responsibilities were by the commission? In doing that, the question that I would have is, and that was really mentioned at the last meeting, if the requirements were that we have candidates that would have the experience as a city manager, and this has nothing to do with the individual that's being presented this evening. And so, the question I have is, from the consultant's standpoint, if the requirements were that the individual had to have five years of city management, how would the consultant come up with a candidate that did not have that experience? I would also like to mention, and this is, and so that's a question. And the second comment I will make is, the previous resident mentioning about the status quo, this, I'd been in this community for over 30 years. It has never stood on the status quo, and we keep hearing this over and over again. And quite frankly, it's almost an insult to the community and residents who have been here for 30 and 40 years. If we were stated as a status quo, we would never be here today. Mr. Brookman would never have moved here. We also are an anchor for not only this community, but the whole area of Oakland County and Woodward Corridor. So this fact about status quo is something that is in someone's fantasy land. And I don't mean that disingenuously, but we keep hearing that. And quite frankly, many of you that are here moved here because of the fact that the commission, the residents in this community did not, did not accept the status quo. They stayed in the forefront. And so, for people to state that, and I've seen it in print in the media, and quite frankly, it's overused and insulting to some people that have been here, and we can go on many projects stating about this is not the status quo, and it has been challenged a number of years. And I would hope this commission would reassess, reassess their comments when it comes to that. Thank you. But the question I have again for the consultant is, how did that happen and how did the candidate?
I'm going to ask that we answer the questions after everybody's had a chance to speak, so if you don't mind us holding.
That's fine.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, everybody.
Hi.
John Yulinski, 30 Wellesley. Just a meager cry for civility. I've been a little upset the last few days reading stuff that's on Facebook, and it's, I don't know if it's just because it's May, as Tom mentioned, or what it is, but I think as a community, we can do better than what we're doing right now. I am upset by accusations, innuendos, that I believe are out of place. I think too often, they are accompanied by the term, "Oh, it's not personal," but yet, of course, it is personal. I mean, the gentleman is sitting right there. This is not some abstract thought or debate with fictional characters, you know? But I think sometimes we say things like that to make us look a little more benign as we may try to, oh, I don't know, maybe assassinate somebody's career aspirations. On a lighter note, I hope some of you would find this minimally humorous. I did, in a way, and there's also a little tinge of irony. But I think one of the, apparently, one of the problems people had with Mr. Brookman was that he had no experience in negotiating contracts. And of course, another problem was that the new contract that he is apparently to be rewarded was too high, and I just took a step back and thought, wait, so if I have this correct, the guy who seemingly can't negotiate just managed somehow to negotiate a contract for himself that is over the top. Anyway, I just wanted to say, as a proud citizen of this community, which I dearly love, I wanted to congratulate Mr. Brookman and offer my support, help, any way that's possible for me. One last little thing is, you know, I'm not alone. There's a hell of a lot of people that are residents of this fine community that are happy to see you and to back you. Now, they're not running around the neighborhood with petitions, but I really believe if they did, he would blow the other one right out of the water. Thank you.
Thank you. See? Sorry. You're definitely, sorry.
I didn't see your hand. Jane McColsky, 110 Oakland Park. My comments are different from what the other people have said. My comments, and I wasn't going to speak. I came here late, and I wasn't going to speak. But like Tom, I sat through five hours of interviews, and I went to the meet and greet. And so, I feel that I do at least know something about the candidates, and I feel very strongly that the two finalists we had were very, and are very fine men, both of whom have a lot to offer, both of whom have offered a lot. But my concern now is, as the commission, you're going to appoint the city manager, and we know who the city manager is going to be, and he's our neighbor. He lives in our community. And this may sound very, very simplistic to all of you, but for the last two years, we've gone through a lot of change in this community, and even the best change in the world is difficult. There's a downside to every change, no matter how high the upside may be. And for this community to continue to be the kind of community that we have been and that we are, we need tonight to leave our animosity, our anger, our disappointing, even possible gloating if there are gloaters in the neighborhood. We need to recognize that we're at a new place in the history of Pleasant Ridge, and that we need to work together to maintain the best neighborhood that we can have here. We're unique, and you're going to hear from me when I don't like what you do, and there'll be times I won't like what you do. And in fact, people in this room know I have complained some and talked some about some of the things, some of the changes that I don't endorse 100%, but that doesn't mean they're wrong changes. It means I don't endorse them 100%. So all I'm asking is primarily of us and our neighbors that we work together with our commission, who was elected, that we work together with the city manager, that we welcome the city manager, and that if we have a complaint about an issue, not a personality, we talk either here at this meeting, or we go into the city manager's office and say, "I don't care for what's happening in government in Pleasant Ridge. I don't like my sidewalks," or whatever the devil it may be. But that's really what I want, because arguing, holding grudges, gloating, feeling bad, being angry, and maybe even hoping that someone fails is not healthy. And all it does is make the citizens of this community unhappy people, and that's not why we moved here. We moved here because it's a wonderful community and wonderful citizens, and we have got to remember that. So that's my sermon for you tonight. That's my ode to change, and I'm not making light of any of it. It's a very serious time, and just as it's difficult for Jim, it's difficult for Scott tonight, and we need to heal. We need to, we need to return to the kind of quality citizens we are and that we expect from our commissioners, but our commissioners should expect from us, and that's quality. So thank you very much.
Thank you. You're welcome.
It's a hard act to follow.
I was going to say, great. You can do it. You can do it.
You know, I just, I just want to make a comment. Congratulations. I haven't been here for 30 or 40 years. I've been here for 24, and I just want to thank all of you guys up there, and certainly you for pointing out, making some big fine points. But it really hasn't been until the last five years that I've felt included as part of Pleasant Ridge. So that's what, you know, if that's the status quo of Pleasant Ridge, I don't want it. I embrace change, and I welcome it, and I'm pretty sure we're going to, we'll do just fine. We've got our pet cat.
I'm sorry. Could you give us your neighborhood address?
Oh, heavens. I'm sorry.
We know you, but that's...
Okay. Pat Gross, 70 Wellesley, and on Facebook, I'm...
Thank you.
Thank you.
...for coming to require me.
I'll change that tonight.
I can't wait to see you.
Go back to the kitty in the blanket.
Any other comments? Do we have any?
Hi. Frank Rubino, 25 Oxford Boulevard. Just to address a couple of issues, excuse me. I just drove in 175 miles to get here, so...
No problem.
Questions I have, it's one that Mr. Cabazos asked, is how did the change come about? When we had to have five years' experience as a manager and past experience, how was that overlooked or waived, or how was that done? Just a couple of comments. I want to say something that Jane said, which I agree to in some respects. I think we need to move forward, but I also think that everybody has a right to give their opinion. And because we give an opinion contrary to what you think, not you personally, you as everybody, doesn't mean that we don't have the right to say it. It doesn't mean we're bitter, it doesn't mean we're enemies, doesn't mean anything. It means that we just think that we're going in the wrong direction. A couple of people that spoke tonight, I remember when I was sitting there and came up and attacked things we were doing, and then later on said, "Hey, we're still friends, aren't we?" And when I was up at Ridge Road, I said, "Sure." So I didn't take it personal. I think that's the gentleman I'm talking about. It's not a personal issue. If you didn't like something, you have the right to say it. Couple of questions I have about another comment that were made on Facebook. I didn't make any comments on Facebook, but I did a lot of reading. One comment was made, "You should always be paid more than the people that are working for you." That's true, as long as you know more than the people working for you, especially if they've been here 15, 20 years. You hire somebody, and then you give them six-month intervals, and then if they progress and they really earn the job, then you move them up to the job and to the rate of pay that they should get. If you start them real high, if it doesn't work out, then you've got a problem. The other question is, you have in your contract a termination, a 30-year notice at either party? Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay. Upon termination, there's six-month severance pay?
Yes.
Is there a time limit on that?
Depends, actually, I think.
It depends on who terminates.
If it's without cause, then the employee's given six-month pension, I mean, six-month pay?
Yes.
What if it's only three months? Is there a time schedule on that?
We'll answer that after.
Okay. Because I didn't read it in the contract. I just thought I'd ask that. The other thing is that upon leaving, you get paid 100% of your sick days, but when you retire, you only get 50%. Is there a difference?
I'm not sure I answered the question, sorry.
If somebody terminates without cause, they're paid 100% of the sick days, but if they retire, they only get 50%.
I see the question.
Just curious, how that works, why? But still, the main question I have is, I think that we need to understand why those requirements were waived. What bothers me most of all is that we spent money, when I say "we," and I read on Facebook when people are talking about, "We did this, we did that," we are all Pleasant Ridgers. We all are paying for this, not people on the east side, not people on the west side. All of us are in this together. We have to accept that. So when things aren't right, if somebody doesn't like it, they have the right to come up and ask that question, why? And I just think that it's not right that we're spending $8,000 for a search, and then we don't even follow the guidelines of our search. That bothers me somewhat. We're spending money on the search, we're spending, we wanted to spend money for an interim manager, which we didn't really need. We're going to send money on the CAC, chairperson, which could have been done by just the residents and members of this commission. This seems to me, and then I understand that now we're not going to pave Oxford, which a lot of my neighbors are calling me and asking me why, that I did it and that I didn't. But there's just a lot of questions of why these things are all happening, and I think we have a right to know that, and we have a right to question that, no matter where we live. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Are there any other, any other comments, questions?
I'm going to bring you on the phone. I wasn't expecting to speak. I'm Karen Mahia. I'm at 31 Sylvan. It's my first commission, so I was just making a couple notes. Thank you. We are new to Pleasant Ridge. My husband and I haven't even looked here yet, and from the crowd, I can tell you probably don't get too many people in my demographic. Sorry. I'm also a hard-timed comedian. Sorry.
Which demographic is that? Stylish, yes, stylish glasses.
I put them on so you know me, can face it.
I love it.
So I've heard a lot of Facebook posts, and a lot of people talk about people move here because of the way Pleasant Ridge is. And granted, my husband and I, when we moved to Michigan two years ago, we did drive by, and I didn't know anything about Pleasant Ridge, except, wow, there's beautiful houses and nice granary. But that's not how really people my age work. I mean, we had a president elected on the theme of change, and that's what this generation wants. We want change. And so, I just want to tell you that I appreciate what you guys do. You were elected, you won, and I stick by you, and if you fail, you have to accept those failures, and if you win, you know, good job. So thank you. I really appreciate it. But yeah, I just want people to know that we want change, so thank you.
Thank you.
I love that younger demographic. I can take it, that's it. I know I'm old. Is there any other questions, comments, before we bring it back up to the front? We're going to answer some questions, we're going to give our own thoughts. I did want to go off just for a moment and address the Oxford Boulevard, because I think that's completely out of context, and it has nothing to do with this commission, nor the new city manager, nor anything else. In fact, it has everything to do with past commissions and past city managers, and I think Scott needs to just reinforce the reasons that Oxford is not being done this year, if you would so, please.
Sure.
I know you've done a presentation, we've had quite a bit of talk about this in the past.
Yeah. So the way the millage for the road reconstruction projects worked is to collect 2.0, I believe it's 2.4 or 2.5 mils to help reconstruct our roads throughout the city. So the 2.4 or 2.5 mil raises about $260,000 to $270,000 toward those projects. So we have two of the larger streets that are up for reconstruction, which is West Cambridge and Oxford, and they were, West Cambridge was originally scheduled for last year, and we had some issues with the contractor, and we had to put that off to this year. So we are, we are still using the same dollars for West Cambridge that we were planning to all along, which are from this budget year, 2013, 2014, and money that will be allocated in 2014, 2015, for roughly $500,000 to $550,000 to put toward West Cambridge. We have other money that we put toward road funds. We used to have a lot more money coming in from interest rates, from the SCAF money that is invested, but that money has dwindled, and we have, we do not really put much of that toward the roads because of other needs that we have. So for us to be able to do West Cambridge and Oxford in the same calendar year, we would have to leverage millage money to, another two years down the road to be able to do Oxford in this calendar, in this fiscal year coming up. So we would actually be using funds from 2015, '16, and 2016, '17 to be able to do both of those projects all at once. And when I say leverage, is we basically would have to borrow the money from ourselves and then pay it back from that infrastructure fund. Now, next year, that millage resets because it was just renewed last November, so we will be able to go back up to the 3.0, so we'll be able to get a little bit more money to put toward the roads. So when, when that decision came, and I believe it was February, January or February, when I talked to engineers and got some of the costs, it was more or less the conservative nature in me not to leverage the city's money out into 2017 to do a road project right now. We, I met on the street with the engineers. We've since had the underground televised on Oxford, and it is in good shape. It did have some deep cleaning to be done, some roots to remove, but the physical structure is in good shape. And West Cambridge is not so lucky in that regard. There is a large area of the city. that toward the roads because of other needs that we have. So for us to be able to do West Cambridge and Oxford in the same calendar year, we would have to leverage millage money to, another two years down the road to be able to do Oxford in this calendar, in this fiscal year coming up. So we would actually be using funds from 2015, 16, 2016, 17 to be able to do both of those projects all at once. And when I say leverage is we basically would have to borrow the money from ourselves and then pay it back from that infrastructure fund. Now, next year, that millage resets because it was just renewed last November, so we will be able to go back up to the 3.0, so we'll be able to get a little bit more money to put toward the roads. So when that decision came and I believe it was February, January or February, when I talked to engineers and got some of the costs, it was more or less the conservative nature in me not to leverage the city's money out into 2017 to do a road project right now. We, I met on the street with the engineers. We've since had the underground televised on Oxford and it is in good shape. It did have some deep cleaning to be done, some roots to remove, but the physical structure is in good shape. And West Cambridge is not so lucky in that regard. There is a large area of the sewer that needs to be replaced with the city's main. So that is one of the reasons why it is ahead of Oxford on the schedule because of that. So, you know, if a comment was made that both streets were going to be done at the same time and that could be done, but it's whether or not, I didn't feel comfortable leveraging money that we didn't have at this point. So I had, I recommended the city commission that we wait on that.
And we thoroughly agreed that that was the proper way to do it. Thank you, Scott. Joyce, could I ask you to answer the other question before we start to?
Oh, sure. Well, there was, excuse me, I think I'm losing my curse here. There was a question regarding the requirements for the position. And based on those requirements, how Mr. Bruckman was considered as one of the semifinalists and subsequently one of the finalists for the position. I mentioned earlier about meeting with the mayor and members of the city commission to talk about the position profile. And one of the areas covered in the profile as far as the requirements is a master's degree is preferred. Basically, the candidate shall have a bachelor's degree in public or business administration or related field. Also, it stated that the candidate shall have five or more years of progressively responsible government management experience as a city manager, assistant city manager, or as a department head. And in Mr. Bruckman's case, he was a department head in the position that he was in and still is in with Rochester Hills. So that was based on the requirements stated for the position. And then the other part is basically doing my own assessment as a facilitator. So part of what took place was actually interviewing each one of the candidates to determine whether the candidate would be a good fit for Pleasant Ridge. And so that was part of the process. Check and references was part of the process.
Thank you. Okay. Now, shall I start here, since you liked it?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I have a few things I'd like to share also. I kind of wrote them up a bit, so I'd make sure to get all of them out. Well, I feel very strongly that Jim Bruckman was and is the best candidate for the job of Pleasant Ridge City Manager. I understand there's absolutely no chance that every single resident will agree with me. There just isn't. And this is not saying anything about Jim himself, rather about the differences in how each of us looks at things. I also understand that as a city commissioner, no matter how hard I try, I will never be able to make all residents happy all the time. My intent when making decisions is to do the best I can for Pleasant Ridge, the city that I love and all of its residents. So I thought I'd share some of my thoughts about the selection of Jim Bruckman as my top finalist in our search for city manager. First, per his resume, Jim has worked for the last three years as manager of planning for the city of Rochester Hills. And then for about 10 years previous to that, as principal planner for a consulting firm managing teams and projects working directly with numerous municipalities. I feel this experience will be both relevant to the job of city manager and extremely valuable. As many of us know, a resume only represents part of the story. It's what can get a person an interview, but should not be what gets a person a job. It's much more than that. Combined with his strong and continuing education in areas that I feel will be of great value, the types of answers he gave to our interview questions, and more recently his methodical approach to negotiations with the city around his contract, my firm belief is that Jim was and remains the strongest candidate for the city manager position. Further, he was the only one of the five finalists to receive a score of 10 out of 10 from both of his professional references, one of which was his current boss that did not want to lose him. I think that's high praise. Next, I feel that this assessment was in line with my own when I represent what our MML consultant Joyce Parker said, when she felt Jim best represented what we were looking for in our next manager, based on meetings with us and the criteria that we set. The MML ad for the position formalized and advertised the criteria to attract the type of talent that we were looking for, and the filtering and ultimate selection processes got us to our final selected candidate, who's sitting here tonight. And his proposed salary will be within the advertised range. Now, while I understand that not all residents, my neighbors, will agree with every decision I make, I take their concerns very seriously. It is my hope that residents will always feel comfortable addressing the commission, sharing their concerns, expressing their opinions to us. I not only encourage feedback and concerns, but also listen to it, digest it, and factor it into my decision-making process. At the same time, there are around 2,500 residents in Pleasant Ridge and I must consider all residents in making my decisions, the overall good of the city. I felt and still feel very strongly that Jim Bruckman is the right candidate for the job and will bring the greatest amount of value to the position, which in turn makes for the strongest possible city hall team as a whole. In my opinion, no one candidate will ever be perfect in every way. It's simply not possible to know everything or have done everything. It's my expectation that though, and I'm confident that if there are things that Jim has not done before, doesn't know, he will take it upon himself to learn and master those things, drawing both from his own research and the resources of our excellent city hall staff. Surely, there will be areas where Jim will be able to learn from them, just as there will be areas where they can learn from him. The collective set of skills and experience that I see for us in city hall moving forward is significant and frankly, quite exciting to me. Regarding the petition that was discussed tonight, I certainly applaud the effort to represent many voices on paper. Personally, I have done this myself, so I appreciate it. However, the petition asks for things that I feel have already been satisfied. It asks for more time for public input, while there have been numerous opportunities for public input over the past six to eight weeks and including tonight. It asserts that proper process was not followed, while I beg to differ. All discussions among the city commission took place at public meetings, including workshops, which were advertised by the city in numerous ways, even in some cases on Facebook, thank you, Mr. Mayor, well in advance and in compliance with legal requirements. All residents have had the opportunity to attend these meetings, to experience and get informed about what has been taking place over the past several weeks. Many have done so. I feel this extremely open process to select our next city manager is unprecedented for this city because this openness and public engagement are important to this entire commission. I know that Jim will serve us all very well and will bring the type of experience and approach to the job that we've not seen before. He will complement our existing city hall team and lead them into a strong future for our city. That's it.
Just a couple of things. First, I wanted to address Mr. Romino on his questions. On, yeah, the sick time, I did pull up the contract and you're absolutely right, if he left tomorrow, I guess it won't actually be tomorrow, it'll be maybe two weeks and a day from tomorrow, he would be entitled to six months' pay. On the 100% sick time, the whole idea of that is that he might actually need the sick time while he is employed here, but is willing to forfeit half of that sick time in retirement. So it makes sense that while you're employed, you're given sick days. So those were your two questions, I just wanted to make sure I got back to you on that. Secondly, Jay basically said almost everything that I would have said. I phrase it to other people in this way, city government is a contact sport. So it's really important that citizens speak out when they have concerns about what's happening in the city, whether you're in favor of something or against something. So I'm wholeheartedly in favor of hearing any comments from anyone at any time because I think it's important for everyone to speak up. That's how we move the city forward and in the direction that people want it to move, whether it's exactly the way it is today, or pieces of a change, or however it goes. So I appreciate everyone that made it here tonight to speak their mind from whatever perspective they came from. I thought it was, it means something to me. And then lastly, I'm really very much in favor of Jim having the position. I was one of the negotiators for the contract and I think the city got a good deal and Jim got a good deal. So the discussion of it being too much or too little, or exorbitant, or whatever, I came to it from the perspective of asking the question, what tasks are we asking to be done and what would it take to bring somebody into the city to do that? And that process started last year when we started writing the master plan and the recreation master plan, and we put some aspirations in there. And so we have to bring somebody into the city to help us achieve those aspirations. And that, again, is a process we started last year. And I think we found somebody that can help us do that in addition to answering some of the troubling questions around Woodward and what's happening to our neighboring communities and bringing all of that experience to bear to make sure that we preserve the things that are truly important to us. That, to me, is the key. So that's about it for me.
Thank you. Go back to the slide.
Thank you, Mayor. I, as Jay had prepared some comments because I want to make sure I got these words out for everyone tonight. Tonight is a night filled with great hope for the future of our city as we commit to a new city manager to lead this great community we all call home. After a process initiated last July by the announcement of our longtime city manager Sherry Ball that she would be retiring, this community has long anticipated this evening's decision. While some will welcome Jim Bruckman and are eager to see him as our next city manager, others are understandably disappointed with both the selection and also the process through which he was chosen. To these neighbors, I want to express my sincere appreciation and respect for their concerns. To those who cared enough to write and circulate a petition gathering the disapproval of their neighbors, I want to assure you that your voice was heard and considered. As someone who found themselves circulating their own petition not too long ago in an effort to convey the sentiments of my fellow Pleasant Ridgeers to our city commission, I understand and applaud the effort and the passion that entails. In the close to 11 months since Sherry announced her decision to retire, I have been made aware of the desires of many in this community as to how we should proceed regarding her replacement. Some say, some see the way we have conducted the search as open and inclusive and are satisfied with the results. There are others of our neighbors who see this decision as being unconcerned with their opinions and thoughts and could not be more dissatisfied. I want to assure everyone in this community that I have considered tonight's appointment with the utmost respect for all the voices, both in favor and of those opposed. Since last July, I've been living with this decision and contemplating over and over in my mind the many possible outcomes. And I'd like to echo Jay's thoughts and share my wife's advice that you can't make everyone happy. And I think Commissioner Romino and other ones, other members of this community who have served on this commission know that to be true. But one thing we all can do is treat everyone with respect, and I have tried my best to do that over the past 11 months and I pledge to continue in that effort. And if I have failed in that regard, I am very sorry. I want to thank Joyce Parker for her help through this very challenging time. She has been very supportive with information and support and I want to thank you for that, Joyce. I want to take this time and acknowledge the hard work and dedication of the entire staff here at city hall, from Amy, Darren, Bridgette, Rodney, Taren, Chief Carl, and all our dedicated police officers. You have all stepped up and made this transitional period as smooth as could be, and I know I express appreciation of this entire community when I say thank you. I also want to acknowledge the contributions of Scott Petersak. You have shown this community dedication and devotion above your pay and title for many years now. I know more than any member of this community that this process was toughest on you. Your disappointment at the outcome is natural, is naturally the greatest of anyone, but you took it in stride and did not let it dissuade you from the job at hand steering this community through. I know we are not bestowing on you the title tonight that you had hoped for, but by your actions and your words, you displayed traits that are not bestowable by any simple group of elected officials. You carried yourself like a man through this entire process and for that, I will always have the utmost respect for you. It is with my vote tonight that I commit fully to Jim Bruckman as our next city manager with the confidence that this is the opening of an exciting new chapter in the city's history. His over 12 years of planning experience will benefit every member of this community as we see change coming to the entire Woodward corridor. This change will be in the form of our own preemptive solutions to nagging problems like the Oakland Park Sylvan Crossing and parking in our downtown district, but also outside regional planning, in which we will have to have a strong voice at the table and ensure that the concerns of PR are strongly represented. Jim comes from his position as a planning manager in Rochester Hills, highly regarded by many who have worked with him over the years. My hope is that he will bring a new perspective that will enhance the way things are already done here in city hall in a collaborative way. He has a distinguished academic career at both Notre Dame and Michigan State, and his latest pursuit of yet another degree, this one in finance from U of M Dearborn, displays an attitude about lifelong learning that I believe will benefit the residents of this community. And finally, the fact that Jim and his wife Carla are residents in this community means to me that he will bring a unique perspective to the office of city manager. Our concerns are automatically his concerns and if we are going to maintain an emphasis on citizen engagement, I see no better way to achieve this than making a citizen our highest administrator. With that, I want to welcome Jim to the team, but I also want to echo Jay McColsky's comments tonight. I didn't write down anything as powerful as her words tonight, but I would encourage us all to take them to heart. And that's all I have.
Well, I don't have anything nearly as eloquent as everyone else has said, but I just want to say I really, you know, this process has been a really interesting one and very, I think, intense for the whole city. But I want to thank Scott Petersak so much for all the amazing work you've done of figuring out how to juggle all of our interesting personalities and all the good, weird topics that have come up over the past six months. You have really, like, helped us quite a bit. Also, I do want to thank everyone who has come out through all the different parts of the process. The five-hour interview day was amazing and the people who stuck with us through parts of it or the whole thing, that was, it was a really good, interesting day. And this process has been, you know, I feel it's been very open and really a real rewarding one for the city because there were opportunities to meet lots of different people who had so many different perspectives on this job. And it was, it was great, you know, it was great for me to really see that. One of the reasons I'm really excited about the opportunity to work with Jim Bruckman is he is, he is a really resourceful, bright, well-educated candidate, you know, is what he showed us on that day and that whole weekend and through this whole process. And he is truly passionate about municipal government. And the thing that, you know, makes that puzzle piece really fit in with him being a good fit for us is that he lives here. He made a choice long ago to live in this city, which we've all made that choice. And so it makes it, you know, just this perfect sort of synchronicity of, you know, of the governance that we all need and enjoy in the city, but also the passion and love for what a city like Pleasant Ridge is, which is truly unique. And while there is the history and the historical quality to it that I've always loved, you know, and I'm much like you were Karen Ware, I, you know, I chose it because I really loved the houses, they were really pretty. I didn't know much more than that. But there is so much of a community to it and, you know, and he's chosen to be a part of this and to raise his children here and to, you know, send his children to school here. And I think that is, that will just bring a really important point of view to our city. And I'm just really looking forward to working with Jim Bruckman. Thank you.
Thank you.
I could breach etiquette, so hearing everyone else speak, I realized there was something that I neglected to say, and it's already been said, but I'll say it again. Thank you to everyone that has come tonight, not just tonight, but the previous meeting, to speak your mind and say what you want to say, whether it be email, verbally, coming to city hall. Again, that's what it's all about. That's what I thought was important to me as a resident, and I really appreciate that you guys think it's important as well to come here tonight, before, and into the future. Even if it disagrees with me, if I'm wrong, I'm happy to admit it and apologize for it. If I'm right, I'm not going to gloat, Jane. Nobody will gloat.
I'm watching.
So thank you again, and I'm sorry I didn't say it earlier. I'm embarrassed.
Don't be embarrassed. Well, I always wait till the end because I know everybody else is going to say everything and the eloquence that comes from all around. But I do, I want to thank everybody for coming and I do want to say that as a 28-year resident, I can say why we picked Pleasant Ridge, but it was a natural move up from Ferndale, right? But I wanted to just add, we didn't take this job knowing that everybody was going to follow us in lockstep. was going to follow us in lockstep. We took this job because we cared about the community and we wanted to do what we felt was best. I think tonight, we are doing that by adding Jim Bruckman to the team, and I'm very excited about that. I have, in my former life, I find that I've come to meet a lot of people who know Jim. I did a lot of work with cities throughout the region, and I've worked with a lot of city planners and a number of other city officials. And I've gotten to speak with them about Jim. And actually, to every last person have had wonderful, wonderful reviews, wonderful comments, a lot of people saying how lucky we are. I feel that we definitely are. We've talked about a team. I think we are adding a perspective to a team that is very strong with Amy and Scott, and Darren and Taren. Bridgette, Darren, Taren, and Bridgette. But there is this idea of planning. Just to throw this out, we have a planning, we outsource consultant, planning consultant operations with a group called Beckett and Rader. We've had a contract with them since 1993, since we've never, which we've never rebid. We just up it with their salad, with their changing salaries. We have spent so far since July 1st of this fiscal year, $76,000 on planning, which is well over twice of what was budgeted originally. We're getting a planner. Just think, you're worried about salary, think of the money that we're going to be able to save, and the idea about rebidding and deciding where we want to spend our money in terms of planning and other resources. I do want to thank Joyce very much for leading us through this process. You did a wonderful job, and we thank you for everything you did. And I do definitely want to thank the staff here. Amy, but really Scott, and the words were said, I think, very eloquently by Jason, that Scott just rose to the occasion, has done a wonderful job. As, in fact, yesterday, as he was trying to work with all the gadgets to keep the Memorial Fountain going, you know, you could see that kind of from soup to nuts, carrying us through this process. And I really look forward to continuing to work with you. And again, I'm sorry that it didn't turn out the way you probably would have hoped, but I think it really will be a terrific team going forward, and I really look forward to the next years in Pleasant Ridge. And again, I thank everybody for coming. We, as we've said, we don't expect everybody to follow us and cheer us on. We want comments when you're not happy. We want a civil discussion. As John said, it would be nice, make it civil. Tell us what's wrong, tell us what your concerns are. We want to hear. We are concerned. We don't take these things lightly. Just because somebody's against us doesn't mean that we immediately take it personally or see any kind of negative along that line. That's what we're all here about, and that's what makes Pleasant Ridge what we want it to be. So, I thank everybody for coming again, and I will open it one more time if there are any other comments or questions from the audience before we take a vote. Okay, may we take the vote now?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Crizinick?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes. Motion approved. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Mayor, I move that we adjourn. Fall in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Yes, you do.